Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 21st, 2015 Wareham Board of Selectments meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, there are three selectmen present, as well as town administrator and town council. Mr. Holmes and Mr. Titlebaum are not present.
All right, can we do the pledge of allegiance, please? How about Derek?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is announcements, Ms. Whiteside, please.
Yes, thank you, I have several. A gentleman from Mattapoisett is going to be running a marathon in Pittsburgh and supporting Damien's Pantry. If you would like to help support Damien's Pantry, you can go into the local newspapers and find the contact information. Also, you can drop stuff off at Damien's Pantry. The local oyster festival is going to be on May 2nd and 3rd. There's an Oyster Festival 5K race on Sunday morning before the festival itself, which runs from 11:00 to 3:00. We will be looking at the permits later on. And it's a great way to get a taste of something that would not pass my lips ever. Again. Friends of the Wareham Free Library are having a used book sale on Thursday, April 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Friday, May 1st, 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Saturday, May 2nd, 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I have to tell you, it's a place where I do a lot of shopping, because I do a lot of reading. Anita Shreve will be visiting the Wareham Free Library this Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00. She will be answering questions and signing autographs if you have one of her books. She probably will sign it for you. Several people have asked the question, what do I do with the sand that I rake up or I sweep up from in front of my house? One, you can put it in a bucket and put it in your garage. Or, you can put it in a bucket and drive it to the recycle the sand pile, which is behind municipal maintenance next to the brush pile. It's open five days a week, and you just go back there and dump it, okay? On May 31st, there is a townwide cleanup, starting at 10:00 in the morning. We have about 200 high school students, we believe, working on that. And I'm looking for zone managers, you know, somebody to manage the pickup at Parkwood, or someone to manage West Wareham. Wareham Free Library is also having a rubber duck race on Sunday, June 14th. It's a duck drop at Makepeace at Tyhonen. And you can buy one duck for five bucks, a baker's dozen for $50. There's a fun run. Do I really have to read this? This is, you can get a six quack for $25. Yeah, really. And a golden flock for $100.
What was that last one?
A six quack. Wareham's Third Annual Business Expo of more than 30 exhibitors is being held Friday, May 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Rosebrook Event Center located at the Town Place Suites. Admission to the expo is free of charge and open to the public. A luncheon and panel discussion to address strategies of business growth and workforce development is scheduled from 12:00 to 2:00. Panelists include Peter Muse of First Citizens Federal Credit Union, Melinda Ailes of the Massachusetts Small Business Development Center, and Christine Moynihan of Principal Retail Visioning. Lunch does have a price tag of $25 or $175 for a table of eight. And again, you can look on any one of the local newspapers to get the information. The Coffee Hour on this Thursday, Cadet Josh Childress will be attending. He is a member of the High School Junior ROTC. And he will be accompanied by Matt Stanton, who's the senior instructor and officer in charge of the Wareham High School program. Dining for a Cause, 99 Restaurants invites you to a fundraiser to benefit the onset bees beach jazz festival, Music in the Middle, on May 6th, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the 99 Restaurants. So, if you, there are some vouchers around town, present the voucher, and you'll get, the restaurant will donate 15% of your guest check to the organization. So, it's benefiting the onset beach jazz festival and Music in the Middle. Jacob's Run, Sixth Annual Motorcycle Run, and no, I am not riding on the back of your motorcycle, Mr. Slaven. Is Saturday, May 2nd, Stevie B's Onset Sports Resort, 270 onset Avenue. Registration from 9:30 to 11:00. Kickstands up at 11:30 a.m. sharp. Donation of $15 per bike and $5 per additional rider. Jacob was diagnosed on his third birthday with neuroblastoma, which is a rare type of childhood cancer that forms in the nerve tissue. And...
It's a really nice event, hopefully people will turn up for that, please.
One other. The Last Hope K-9 Rescue will be setting up a hot dog stand, grab a dog to save a dog for the Last Hope K-9 Rescue at 672 County Road, West Wareham, from 11:30 to 1:00 on May 2nd. I'm not sure I know a whole lot about it, except adopting a dog can be a very rewarding experience. That's all I have.
Mr. Slaven, please.
I'll be meeting on Friday with Mr. Caher from the Hyannis Regional Transportation Office for the final details of the Cape Flyer. They're going to change the Friday timeframe a little bit to make it a little more viable. And they'll be doing more promotions to bring people down through and stopping at Wareham. We'll be working on, again, on a bus station type setup outside of the station here in downtown to take people to other places as well. I think that's all I have for today.
Okay, I only have one announcement, and it's kind of a sad announcement. Mary Scaziati, who is a longtime member of our Zoning Board of Appeals, passed away last Friday morning. Pretty quickly, actually, I was surprised to hear that she was having some problems on Monday, and it happened relatively fast. So, I'd like to have a moment of silence, if I can, for Mary. Okay, thank you. I hope everybody thinks of Tony and the family, and will be, myself at least, be praying for him to get through this tough time he's having. Okay, next is appointments, Zoning Board of Appeals.
We have three vacancies for associate members on the Zoning Board of Appeals. In your packet, you have applications from James Yakabachi, Jan Kendrick, and Nazee Al-Kalasi.
Are they here? Can you come down? Can you come down and sit with us, please? Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Do you want us to sit with you or in front of you?
In front of us would be okay.
You don't want to sit with us.
Believe it or not, you don't want to try to sit in this chair with me.
If you're the co-host, we'd give it a pretty good test.
No room here. All right. Why don't you each tell us who you are, for the record, your name, and then tell us a little bit about yourselves?
My name is Jim Yakabachi. I'm a local real estate broker, self-employed, have my own business. Been self-employed for, I don't know, some teen years. Was in the real estate business for some teen years before that. Prior to that, I was in the hospitality industry. Graduated the Culinary Institute. Played chef, played restaurant manager, played schoolteacher for seven years, was a vocational ed teacher. Done a multitude of things. The reason I got involved in real estate is because I get to use all my abilities. I can relate to just about anybody's situation. And there is my interest in the Zoning Board of Appeals. We sometimes come up across things that require a little common sense, and that's what I bring to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Al-Kalasi.
For the record, Nazee Al-Kalasi, live on Tower Terrace. For the last 25 years in Wareham, proud to be a citizen of the town of Wareham. Raised three kids in this town. The three of them went to the school system, at least kindergarten, middle school. And one of them went to the high school. Both girls in college, the boys out of town in high school. Been in the real estate and construction for the last 25 years. Town's been very good for me. And I would, like I said tonight, the reason I'm here, asking you for the privilege to put me in the zoning board to be an associate member, because I could be a good, I believe I could be good assets for the board. Since I'm a developer, I know all the laws and everything else. So, I would thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Jan Kendrick. I recently relocated to Wareham, well, September of 2014, from Boston. I've been an attorney for five years, I have some experience in zoning and land use. I'm looking for an opportunity to get involved in the community. And I think that with my past professional experience, I could be of best service on the ZBA.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board?
I just have one question, sort of a fresh question. How are you with, you know, trash stabbers and trash picker-uppers?
Don't even bother.
You know, those little things.
Do I get along with them well? She's trying to recruit everybody into trash pickup for the 30 firsts.
I'm very coordinated, and I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Same, yeah.
All right, I got a few. Everybody can take turns answering. For each one of you, how many meetings have you attended to the ZBA at this point in time, current board?
How many meetings?
Yes.
None.
Okay.
How many meetings? I've been to ZBA?
Yeah.
Over 200.
I have not yet had the opportunity to attend a ZBA meeting in Wareham.
Okay. Next point would be, as a lawyer for yourself, are you intending to practice it all in the town of Wareham, representing people in real estate?
I am currently considering the opportunity, I mean, the possibility of opening a private practice. However, I'm aware of the fact that I would not be able to represent people in...
Well, actually, we have what we call a special employee exemption, which you can, as long as you file. But if you have someone coming before the ZBA, that there's a conflict, you'd have to accuse yourself.
Okay.
So, you can do that, but I just want to make sure of that.
Okay.
Same question for Nazee, you have areas where you're probably going to have to accuse yourself.
Definitely.
You understand?
I understand that, definitely.
Okay. The other concern I have overall is it's not a simple job, because it's one of the few places that we get sued constantly when we make our rulings. So, it's critical that whoever we put on the board really has good background and good experience with us. So, we have things coming up immediately. And basically, of the three of you, one of you is going to end up being on the board almost immediately as a full member, because we just lost one of our members. And they need a full five board member in order to do some of the things coming for them. So, that means going back and reviewing a bunch of projects. So, you're going to have time. Any of you have any restrictions on time to go back over all the minutes?
I do not.
I don't.
No. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
Okay. I move that James Yakabachi of 398 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Be appointed as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2016.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Just for information, the reason we're doing this is normally we'd appoint the three members until the end of 2015. But because of the timeframe being so short, we're going to extend it for the actual full year. Just so everybody understands. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous 3-0-0.
Stop off at the clerk's office tomorrow sometime, you can pick up your, actually go up to the Selectments Office, get your papers. Go downstairs to the clerk's office, you can get sworn in. The first meeting, I believe, is a week from Wednesday.
Could I have the next motion, please?
I move that we appoint Nazee Al-Kalasi to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous 3-0-0.
I move that Jan Kendrick of 60 War Avenue, Wareham, Mass. Be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous 3-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for stepping up.
Paperwork will be probably not done until later on in the day tomorrow. And, well, it may, or it may not be. But you also should make sure that you get a copy of the How to Be a Volunteer for the Town of Wareham booklet. Tells you, gives you all sorts of helpful hints about what to do and what not to do.
And there's a bunch of things that you're going to get, little booklets and stuff, read them. There's also a little ethics thing that you should,
You must.
You should read and you must take, okay? I think you can do it online.
Yes, you can.
You can do it online.
Can't fail.
Just, and you can't fail it, okay?
Doesn't let you fail it.
You've got to pass it, okay? So, if you could do that, that'd be a wonderful thing.
So, we pick up paperwork tomorrow?
Tomorrow in the Selectments Office first, upstairs on the third floor.
And then you'll go downstairs?
And then you will go downstairs to be sworn in by Mary Ann Silva or one of the, in the town clerk's office. Thank you.
And when do we pick up trash?
May 31st. May 31st is a townwide cleanup. And you can be char, yeah. You can be in charge of War Avenue and that portion of...
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Naz.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, application for a one-day wine and malt beverage license by Wareham Village Association.
One bottle?
Yes. No, we didn't put it in tonight. It got left off the agenda, so we're going to have to skip it. It'll be in next week. It just, it was totally an error that it got left off, we're sorry.
Mr. Chairman, with that in mind, do you, after this, do you mind if I just take out of order the town administrators' report on that blanket? Because I do have some help from one of the libraries.
Absolutely, as soon as I have the onset village, we'll move right on to that.
Thank you very much.
All right, hello.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so you're looking for a one-day wine and malt license. This is for the oyster festival, I'm assuming.
Correct, correct.
So, why don't you tell us a little bit about how you're going to handle things and what you plan on doing?
Well, this is an event that we ran for the first time last year, and it was a good learning experience last year. And we're hopeful that it's a much improved event this year. First of all, we changed the date a little bit, so that we are hoping for a little bit better weather. If you all recall, it was 48 degrees that entire day.
Cold, raining too, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. So, we're hoping that by moving it back a week or two, we will have better weather for it. We have, another member of our Board of Directors has met with the police chief regarding the need for details and road closures related to the 5K and the festival itself. We have come up with several improvements resulting from the discussions last year around the beer and wine area, including a clearer definition of the area with stanchions and staffing by volunteers. We will move, we had a table last year that was staffed by volunteers for the Wareham Village Association, and we're selling t-shirts and sweatshirts and so forth. We'll be moving that to the same location as the beer and wine, so that we'll increase our volunteer presence at that location. And we will pre-make signs that say, "No alcohol beyond this point." So, we're prepared for the concerns that were expressed last year. We understand that as part of the application that you receive from us, we still owe you the tip certification from our servers, who will be there that day. And we'll be using the same arrangement as we had last year with qualified tips, certified servers, who will be folks from local restaurants who are familiar with the town. It's not related to these permits, but you have a new requirement that you receive $25 for each vendor who will be participating in the festival. And while we're still, as late as today, we're still getting applications from vendors. I do have a check for you for the ones that have been accepted. If you want that tonight or tomorrow, I could drop it off.
Look at him.
It's a little check.
We don't, we don't take checks here, we have to deliver it to the town hall.
We don't take them here, but...
Never hand me originals.
He's glad to have it, though, I'm sure he's glad to have it.
Good. Could I talk a little bit about the other events that will be happening during the course of the week? Or do you want to just focus on...
No, you may absolutely talk about the other events.
Okay. The festival is from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 3rd. And will feature plenty of oysters, other seafood crafters, and music by the South Coast Jazz Orchestra. And if you've never seen them, they're awesome, it's really a great show. The Oyster Festival 5K is, of course, along Main Street and comes back along High Street. It goes down to Viking Drive and finishes in the middle of the festival area as it's, as the festival is beginning, depending on how fast you run. And the finishers will receive pizza from Minerva's and a unique real oyster medal, handcrafted by one of our friends and supporters, Richard Wheeler. The Oyster Festival Gala, which is not related to this permit application, will be held Friday, May 1st, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the new Rosebrook Event Center. And will feature more oysters and decor by the Wareham Garden Club and the Born Wareham Art Guild, and hundreds of dollars worth of raffle prizes in a silent auction. This is the, that, the gala is the fundraiser for the Wareham Village Association. On Thursday, April 30th, the Wareham Middle School is hosting a presentation by Steve Patterson of the Center for Economic and Environmental Development at Roger Williams University. Sounds kind of dry, but they call him Oyster Steve, and apparently he puts on a great show. There's a presentation for eighth graders at 1:00 p.m. and at 4:00 p.m. for the general public. On Wednesday, April 29th, I'm kind of working backwards through the week. The Mass Oyster Project will return to Lindsay's for a presentation about their experience in Wellfleet with oysters cleaning water. I think, Mr. Slaven, you attended that last year, and it was just fascinating.
Nice event. Just to go back with the, one with the kids, and then later on, where was that going to be held?
At Wareham Middle School.
Middle School, thank you.
At the event at Lindsay's, both of these are free and open to the public, but we ask that people register online. And attendees who pre-register will get a complimentary cup of Lindsay's famous seafood bisque at the Lindsay's event. And finally, on the Monday before town meeting, the Town Harbor Masters Office will set up a table and provide information to the public and hopefully encourage some attendance at town meeting regarding recreational shell fishing and boating safety in town. And if I could just, in closing, put in a plug for our major sponsors. And they include Lindsay's Family Restaurant, Gateway Tavern, Minerva's Pizza, Eastern Bank, Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank, South Coast Health, Edible South Shore, who is our media sponsor, Metro VW, Soft as a Grape, the Rosebrook Event Center, and my employer, the AD Makepeace Company.
Terrific.
Did I miss anything? I had to write it all out, because it's a lot of stuff going on, yeah.
Any questions to the members, please? No, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to go ahead and approve the license as listed in the application.
Which is a special license for the sale of wine and malt beverages.
One-day permit.
For May 3rd, 2015.
Okay, why don't we let Ms. Whiteside read it, and then you can second it, if you don't mind. Go ahead, read it off.
Move that we approve for Wareham Village Associates, Inc., a one-day special license for the sale of wines and malt beverages to be drunk on the premises under Chapter 138, Section 14 of the Liquor Control Act for May 3rd, 2015. The license will expire on May 4th, 2015, unless sooner suspended or revoked.
Okay. Could I have a second? Second, second. Motion made by Mrs. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 3-0-0. All right, stay put. Because next, we're going to use of town roads by the Wareham Village Association. Care of Robert Brady, where's the hatted boy here? We're missing, you know, we were, we actually were taking...
We were taking wages.
Wages on the hat.
He's got an oyster festival hat.
He typically has a hat on, you know. We just wondered if he was going to make the whole thing, or...
He's tending to dogs at the moment.
Okay, so, for the use of town roads.
For the record, I'm sorry, we didn't get hours in that motion.
It was 10 to 5.
10 to 5, so I'd like to amend the motion to...
Okay, go ahead and amend it.
I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
A motion amended by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay. Use of town roads, we really don't, we understand what you're doing, we really don't have much here. So, could you give me a motion on this, Ms. Whiteside?
Move that we grant a use of the roads to Wareham Village Association, Inc. for the oyster festival and 5K run, Sunday, May 3rd, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Understanding that you have the correct and appropriate sign-offs from all of the people involved.
Do I hear a second?
Second, and just for information, all the appropriate sign-offs are in the folder.
Okay, so a motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous 3-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to hopefully have a great event.
Thanks, we hope so, too.
All right, so we're going to take something out of order now, we're going to go to the town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to bring up for one item, then we can come back to the end of the meeting. And I have my representative on this matter, if you don't mind, Ms. White.
Priscilla Porter, I'm the president of the Friends. This is raffle ongoing at the library. This blanket was made by Christine Haywozy. She actually purchased all these t-shirts at Salvation Army and made this quilt. It's beautiful. And it's a nice, heavy, warm quilt. The raffle tickets are on sale at the library, they're $5 apiece. And I will give you library hours, which is Thursday, 10:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday, 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Saturday, 10:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. She has requested that we sell at least 100 raffle tickets, so that's our aim. It's just a beautiful piece of work.
That's nice. Do they get, they get a good picture of it out there?
Bob says he's getting a good picture of it, so...
Well, we've also got permission to display it at town meetings, so people can see it there, too.
When will the drawing be?
After we sell 100 tickets. So, I'm not sure, we haven't really set a date. So, and I haven't counted how many have been sold.
Shouldn't take long to sell 100 tickets.
Well, you know, it's only been on display at the library. So, this gives everybody a good look at it, and hopefully we'll bring in more.
Awesome.
Best, best odds around, 100 to 100.
Yeah. And I just, with, can I just mention with Anita Shreve, we do have her latest book. Hard and paper copies at the library that people can buy and get signed, so.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping me out.
Is that it?
That's it for the, this portion.
All right, we're going to go back up to the updated liquor policy for release of license. We have in here, in the packet. Now, if you remember right, we had a suggestion, right? I got it here somewhere. Just got to find it.
I got it, if you want.
You got it?
It's number two fifteen oh four.
All right, so I think, I believe you put this on the agenda, Mr. Slaven. So, why don't you go ahead and, here it is, right here, why don't you go ahead and run us through it, please? I think so.
Yeah, no, I have this.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, that's the one, the statement, right?
This was something that was put together, working with the Inspektional Services Department, the Town Treasurer. And anything else that we have that would affect, you know, license being issued, not issued, or being held for payments, et cetera. And all this is, is nine steps of how we, when we go ahead and vote on a license, how it goes through before it's actually handed out to the particular applicant.
Okay.
And this just eliminates any issues that we have down the line.
All right.
If the clerk would like, she can read off one through nine, just so people know what it is.
Policy to secure license for liquor and common vitilor. One, confirm the zoning appropriateness. Two, apply to the Board of Selectmen for license application. Three, ladies and gentlemen, it's really hard to hear, if you guys are all talking, please don't.
Mr. Walton, Mr. Russo, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three, application is issued if applicant is qualified but held. Four, apply to Inspektional Services, the Fire Department, the Water Department, the Board of Health and Water Pollution Control Facility for modifications to whatever unit you're going into. Five, complete modifications and pass final inspections with all pertinent departments and obtain a certificate of occupancy for, for the premises, a standard form in all modification projects. Six, apply for change of use or occupancy. Seven, apply for a certificate of inspection, standard state certificate issued every year. Eight, request release of the license from the Board of Selectmen upon presentation of a certificate of inspection. Nine, establishment can now open. You forgot to say that all of the fees should be paid, but that's understood. That was the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion about it? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, three zero zero.
And no new fees, Patrick. And no new fees.
And no new fees, imagine that. Wow, and, okay, next is a presentation of the Wareham Village Parking Study. And, come on down.
Good evening. Did you all receive the copies we sent last week of the parking study report? Not, I'm happy to hand you one.
I think we have pieces of it.
No.
How you doing?
Did not get it.
We didn't get the total report, I think we sent pieces of it, right?
Yeah, I sent them off to Janet and Janet was supposed to distribute them to you all.
Is the whole report, oh, yes, we get, yeah, we'll take that, we'll take one of those anyway.
One of the, yeah, the nice ones for the record.
But I think this is the one she copied right here, so she must have copied it. But I'd like to see the total management plan and that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Janet did put it in the packet, not just the colors.
Right.
We didn't get the colors, what's the deal with that?
Budget cuts.
Budget cuts?
They don't have money.
So, yeah, I'm here today with Lisa Jacobson, and Lisa is from Nelson Nygaard, who CDA commissioned the study for that parking study. So I just want to introduce her.
Okay.
Excellent, I'll just spend a couple of minutes as a point of information to let you know about the study, how it came about, the process we went through, and what our recommendations are. All documented in this report. Again, I'm, my name is Lisa Jacobson, I work for Nelson Nygaard, we're a national transportation planning firm. We do these types of parking studies all across Massachusetts, all across the country, it's been really fun to work in Wareham Village. A parking study was a very important step to take in Wareham Village as the streetscape is recent. And we've heard from many business owners about their parking concerns on Main Street and on Merchant's Way. With the Cape Fire and, and all the changes going on in Wareham Village, we looked from the fire station down to the bridge at the full parking picture. What we did is we documented all the parking spaces, both public and private, on-street and off-street. We looked at not just the spaces, but we did parking counts, how many cars are parked in all of these spaces on a couple of typical days, on weekdays and weekends. We also had an online survey to hear people's concerns about parking in Wareham Village. And did several stakeholder interviews, talking with business owners that have been in the community for a while, to hear about their concerns about parking in the village. We also had a public meeting last September, right across the, in the in-town hall. We had about twenty-five people, where we presented our initial recommendations to hear back from people, what they thought about some of the ideas of how we can improve parking, parking in the village. So, as a quick rundown, what we found, we counted about thirteen hundred spaces in the village. Most of those spaces are off-street, most of those spaces are privately owned, not owned by the town, but privately owned. What we found out of these thirteen hundred spaces, our busiest occupancy count showed that the thirteen hundred spaces were twenty-eight percent full, so less than thirty percent full. We found that all of the parking spaces on Merchant's Way at the busiest time of day were about fifty percent full. We found in our survey that most customers told us that they're staying in, in Wareham Village for two hours and fifteen minutes. Which is interesting, as most of the parking is, is two-hour limited. We heard in the survey that sixty-seven percent of customers, about two-thirds of customers, said it took them about a minute to find a parking space. But we heard from the business community that there is a lack of parking and they would like some activity to help improve the parking situation. We also heard a lot of mixed reactions about the streetscape plan on Main Street, some really like it and some don't like it at all. So, there's many more findings, that was a quick summary, and I'd like to go through the recommendations. We have them in four different categories. The first is parking, parking management. And what I mean by parking management are pricing, sorry, pricing and time limits and different types of regulations. Because the parking demand, the busiest point of day in the village is about twenty-eight percent full, we're really recommending keeping the regulations as is for now. We recommend that the town evaluate the parking situation every year, every season, however, however, any changes that happen in the village of parking should be monitored and evaluated. If that twenty-eight percent continues to increase, then it's time to think about some different types of regulations. But for now, in the short, short term, we recommend that the two-hour time limits and the unlimited, unregulated parking remain as is. The second recommendation is about shared parking. We found that there are several, as most of the parking in the village is owned by private landowners, there is some opportunity, if and when there's more public parking is needed. For that, for the town to lease or work with some of these private landowners to have parking after hours. So, for example, the engineering firm next to the post office didn't really seem to use much of their parking during our parking counts. If there's more need for post office parking, we have some ideas about the town working with some of these private landowners to use some of their private parking for public use. The third, and I'd say the, the biggest, most kind of catalytic recommendation, is rethinking Merchant's Way. I know Merchant's Way has been talked about many times in town, about, think, ideas about making it one-way versus keeping it two-way. What we recommend, and is detailed on several pages in the plan here, is really making Merchant's Way a secondary Main Street. Right now, it's, it's a little bit ambiguous, it's hard when you're walking through there to, which, which way cars are going. Some areas have kind of seas of pavement, some areas get a bit more narrow. And what we're talking about is making it a street, having parallel parking, more similar to Main Street, as opposed to the head-in ninety-degree angle, ninety-degree angle parking. Which is, is a little bit unsafe to pull, to pull and back out onto Merchant's Way. We observed a lot of cut-through parking, I'm sorry, cut-through driving, a lot of commuters presumably driving very quickly through there. And we think that there's a lot of opportunity to make Merchant's Way a place. There are already some businesses that back, their, whose front of the business already face onto Merchant's Way. And several other businesses that have storefronts, doors, entries for Merchant's Way into their, into their place of business. So we're recommending Merchant's Way remain two-way, that it be formalized, there's many drawings in the plan about keeping, creating parale- uh, parallel parking. And really making it that, that secondary Main Street right along the tracks. And our fourth recommendation is really about some of the parking supportive elements. We think that there could be some better lighting in Merchant's Way, really attracting more folks to park over there in the evening. I think that there could be some increased signage, right now, there's no signage from Main Street or at the bridge to know to turn into Merchant's Way, that there is parking there, just putting up some simple P's. P signs, parking signs would help to, to bring folks into Merchant's Way. And the last two supporting elements are adding some bicycle parking and motorcycle parking, we saw several motorcycles taking up full parking spaces. There's some opportunity, I think, especially on Main Street, where there's kind of a little bit of space left over in between some of the bumpouts and some of the parking spaces to maybe stripe a couple motorcycle spaces. Or add some bicycle parking. And lastly, there are no disabled parking spaces on Main Street, which might be okay, but the disabled spaces that we saw marked on Merchant's Way, some of them had dumpsters in them, some of them were not well-maintained. And we think that should be monitored and, and enforced and, and kept up. So that is my quick summary of the Village Parking Study, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions to the board, Ms. Whiteside?
Thank you, first of all, are you an E.N. or an O.N. for the record?
I'm an O.N.
Thank you. The disabled parking, I'm reading from your page forty-two, disabled parking, effectively providing and managing disabled parking is an integral piece of the overall parking system. Off-street zoning code dictates the number of disabled parking needed off-street. There are no rules and regulations, only guidelines for on-street disabled parking provision. Although parking utilization data indicates that the supply of disabled parking spaces is sufficient for the current demand, the location of and access to these spaces could be improved. There are thirty-nine off-street disabled parking spaces and no on-street disabled spaces.
That's not correct.
I'm sorry?
It's not correct. I think there's one. There's at least one by the post office.
Yeah, I think there's one.
There is one by the post office.
By the barber shop.
As, however, signage and designation is not consistent and can be difficult to read. Also, spaces, spaces, bleh, should be kept clear and available. There is an instance where disabled parking space is inaccessible due to a dumpster blocking it. Town should improve disabled parking in the village by, and then it has the, the recommendations. I know that there's a question about who really owns portions of the road and, in the, am I right, Mr. Slaven? Because you're more familiar with this than I am, but.
Well, we have to remember that Merchant's Way is not a road, it is not a street. Merchant's Way is a parking area that was turned over to the town from New Haven Railroad. People think it's a street, it's not. In order to convert that to a street would require a tremendous amount of work and expense on the town. Because you'd have to get into MS four, stormwater management, all kinds of things. But the, the issue we have, more than anything else, is we have merchants who, from a financial standpoint, do not have enough of incentive to turn their buildings around, to go in that direction. We have an issue with the railroad owning the land from a certain point to the water. Then we have a conservation commission that has a no-work zone of thirty feet. And the original idea of some of this was to have like a boardwalk, which would be difficult to get through with current rules and regulations. The other problem we have is the merchants, all the buildings, or at least the buildings, are very nervous about the amount of parking for their own employees, et cetera. Thinking that they're going to have issues. We have a small section on the back of some of the stores where, I think it's the insurance company, Mama Mary's Liquor Store, and that whole section there. There's a little bit of fighting going on in the back of that building there, is who has what to park. And I'm being nice about it, it's more of a fight, actually. The problem is, if you look at the way that the area's lauded out there, at, at the back of those buildings, just a few feet from the back is town property. And they're treating it as if it belongs to the buildings and it doesn't, so there's a lot of things we have to resolve before we can really make any real decisions. And there's a huge amount of infrastructure decisions that have to be made. I have no problem converting it, I think it's, you know, we have people that open up their back doors and you look out the river, and the whole idea is really great, but unfortunately, we inherited. And I use the word inherited because it was virtually given to the town, and it sat for, well, sixty-five years, or, actually sixty years, excuse me, and we haven't done anything. I think sometime before Patrick's time, there was a plan maybe to take the Narrows Bridge, pull it out, and actually have, be able to come up the river and turn it back, and there was a Marina Plan. And it was a great idea, unfortunately, you know, hindsight's easy, but that would have been the best thing that could have happened to the town of Wareham. Because we would have developed that whole backside. I think this is the only community that I know of along the northeast corridor that has waterfront property that has not used their property properly. You go to places like Brockland, you go to some of the small towns that were not real high, you know, tourist places in Maine, and they've all figured out that their only asset is their waterfront, and then they converted all these old industrial buildings, et cetera, so.
Then.
I'm all for what we're going to do, it's just that we've got to really think about how we're going to cha- make the changes.
Well, but you raise a very interesting point, and that is that it's not a road. And to do a parking management plan when you don't own the property and it's not a road, I mean, I'm not going to put a parking lot on a road, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to make it more difficult than it is.
So we own the, we own the property.
Right, but it, it seems to me that, and I think I've said this before. In order for somebody to want to, first of all, I hate the bumpouts, the bumpouts and I do not get along. I know I speak for many people who have run over the bumpouts, who have plowed the bumpouts, who have tripped on the bumpouts, who have slipped on the bumpouts. Anyway, they don't slow the traffic down, they do not slow the traffic down, I.
It's not what they're there for, though.
That's one of the side items of the bumper, was to slow traffic.
Yeah, it is.
Just so you can see around when you're crossing the street, that's all they're good for, really.
They're not even good for that, but.
And, and even that, they don't do effectively.
So, it's, I'm not sure that parking is the solution to whatever it is that ails downtown, and again, I'm not. I, I think in many respects that we've put the cart before the horse, we're trying to make it look nice, but what is it that we're making it look nice for? I mean, there's several businesses, or let's just talk about the fire depart- fire station. The fire station, I don't think, thinks it's going to stay there forever, which, then that property reverts to the town, is my understanding. As well as the Water Department building, maybe, if they, if they give that up too. So, you, you almost have to back up a little bit to understand what's, you know, what's attractive about it. A long time ago, people would self-direct one way on Main Street and the other way on what we called Bacadicus. Was a really good name. Now with the rail reactivating, it's, there's a danger because you have to not have people crossing the tracks. So you've, you've actually shortened up, you've squished the amount of space that's available. And one of the things that's attractive about it is that you can see across the tracks and see the water and see the birds and, you know, the kayaks and whatever. But it's a, it's a, what's it, something or other nuisance, an attractive nuisance, you know, it, I mean, it really is. So, I'm surprised that you found so many parking spaces. If I were to make a recommendation to a business owner, I'd say have all of your employees park someplace else, not on Main Street and not right behind your business. That was certainly a recommendation that in a former employment, I was not allowed to park anywhere near where I was employed. That was for the customers, so that's just my personal opinion, but I, I, again, I'm, I'm worried that we aren't looking at the right question. But thank you, it's a very.
May I, may I comment?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the drawings that we have, rethink rethinking Merchant's Way are intended to support future economic development, filling some of those vacancies. Right now, walking along and, and being in Merchant's Way is, feels like a little bit of a no-man's land. And really, just by using paint, you don't need fancy bricks or curb extensions or bulbouts or, or any of that stuff. What we've drawn here can be done with some paint and some signs, no moving of, of curbs or anything needed. But what, what it really defines is, is treating it like a, a respected space as opposed to the back alley or the backs of the census. The opportunity that you have with the town owning this land is, paint and signs come pretty cheap. And, and it's a good opportunity, we think, to really use that valuable space that has a really, a great view for a better use. Still using it for parking, but making it a place where people feel comfortable where they are. And just one other quick thing is, in our parking management recommendations, we do talk about, in the, in the long term, it could be in the short term as well, as we note. Dividing Merchant's Way might, it might be having employees park along the railroad side of Merchant's Way and customers being able to park behind the buildings. And in the future, in, trying to incentivize employees to park down the end where the fire station is or away from their businesses a bit more to keep some room for customer parking. Today, with, with Merchant's Way being less than half-full, it doesn't seem to be a problem in terms of demand.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Slaven.
Just so we, all on the same page as far as how we do this in a process. Just so we're all on the same page as far as how we do this in a process, we have before town meeting, an article which basically goes ahead and allows the town council to go ahead and final negotiations on the train station, which has a reverter clause that Sal knows about as well, that at any time, they can take the station back and use it if they want. Mass DOT, I believe, Jody Ray has already, we've had discussions, and they've agreed to go ahead and with Mr. Bowen's actual application to them to remove the reverter clause. We know we have Mr. Gay from Gatra. I just came from a meeting actually today with MOP, and on their budget for Gatra is forty, actually sixty thousand dollars for new bus station in Wareham, which would be in that location there. And that would be one of the pieces that we need to look at. I think the alleyways between those two sections, down where the El Marachi restaurant is and then down over by where the liquor store is and that corner there by the bank, those alleyways, we could develop a one-way in and a one-way out. Especially like for, like El Marachi where they are, in the summertime, I can see them having a walkway on the side of that building there and having outdoor seating and eating. And you can actually put a little gate piece around it, so it kind of encloses it, not so much visibility-wise, but nobody walks in and out of it. And I know that Minerva's father down the street has a piece of property, I believe, looking at the building on the right side, which they were going to do an outdoor patio sometime, and we're still holding a liquor license for them for that. So I mean, there's pieces that we can do. I don't disagree about the markings. My only concern for the merchants is that we make sure that all our stakeholders are on the same page and understand what we're doing. Anytime we try and do something, you know, and you force it, it doesn't work, they all have to be there. The bump out situation was designed back in two thousand and five, and it was vetted many times through. And at that particular time in life, the bump outs were one way to stop the traffic flow as far as the speed, get people to slow down and see what was around there. Unfortunately, my experience holding a sign this past month and a half before the election was, when I say people going down through Main Street, even though we had discussion that couldn't go fifty miles an hour, I can tell you that some cars were flying down there when it was quiet at fifty miles an hour. And thirty is not unusual, thirty-five is not unusual. And unfortunately, people going on the crosswalks, it's interesting to watch people with their cell phones, not even seeing who's in front of them, but that's another story. But I think we can take what we have here, because I looked at this last year, and start to pull pieces out and see if we can do it. But we've got to find some way economically of being able to supplement the businesses on Main Street to make the changes, because they don't have the money. They've gone through a really bad fiscal six months, and it's just, it's not there for them. You could offer them all kinds of incentives, but they have to pay for it, they can't do it. And we, now we have four restaurants, I think, that are viable on the street, so we have a start, because that's really what Main Street's going to work on. You know, it's not going to work on what we had for mix before. You have to change the mix to bring people in. Thank you.
Go ahead, Judy.
I just want to come back to something that you said earlier, Mr. Slavin, and that is that we're one of the few waterfront towns that doesn't use a major portion of its waterfront. So why don't we? Why do we, hear me out, instead of thinking of the whole back end of it as a parking lot, think of it as a way of expanding businesses. I don't want to drink a margarita, a cup of tea, or eat a scone with exhaust fumes going back and forth beside me. I don't want to have to be worrying about who's living on Main Street in one of, you know, the housing units. And was, when that was converted, were there dedicated parking spaces? I note that you mentioned the, I'll call it the casino bus. Well, that's great. You know, why is that stopped there? These are all questions that sort of come out of, you know, senior moments and other people saying, this is nuts. If it's a beautiful sight, then use it as a beautiful sight.
We also have, just very quickly, and I'll be done very quickly, the, we've had discussions three years ago now with the people who own the property, starting at British Landing and Zekka Marine, going all the way around to the Narrows Restaurant and down about putting a boardwalk and having something in there, and then hopefully the Baker property would either get sold or redeveloped. So that's another piece, which is on the other side of the bridge. So that's part of, if we ever can get that going, then the other piece can come as well. But that's the easiest one that we have available, because everybody on that, that little loop is all willing to go ahead and develop, including the, you know, the sailing shop and everything else, so.
All right. So I think something definitely needs to happen there. It's like playing dodgem driving down through there, because you kind of go here, round a car, and then you go here, and then you go here, and it's kind of like a big, you know, you never know. And then it's sort of one way from one half of it going in one direction, not the other way. The cars are parked, unmarked spaces, they hang out, the dumpsters are not properly covered and, you know, done correctly. And it looks like the back of a Walmart instead of waterfront property in a prime area of a beautiful town. So I think everybody here is saying the right thing, that we definitely have to come up. I think it's a little more than just parking. I think it's a lot more than just parking. And I think you, Sal, especially, where you were, you know, dealing with the redevelopment of the Main Street and all that, I think your organization has to really look at this and really take, somebody's got to take the ball. And to be honest with you, you're the only full-time organization that can take the ball and start to develop some ideas and get some people together and do those kinds of things. I mean, the town administrator, of course, I'm sure, he is, you know, happy to see that area redeveloped, if I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but I know he appreciates its condition and it needs to get something to happen.
Yeah, I'd love to see like a redevelopment of the town either ways or sell some of the land along the back side of those buildings.
Exactly. Something's got to happen.
Yeah, if I could just make one comment that I think, because I want to remind people that the reason that this study was commissioned is because we did have a plan for Merchant's Way. If you can remember, a couple of years ago, I put together a pretty extensive plan about how to do, how to redefine Merchant's Way. And one of the primary concerns at that point were from the merchants who said they didn't have enough parking. And so we commissioned a parking study to see if that was accurate. So I certainly have heard everything that you've all said, and I happen to agree with a lot of it. But I want people to understand that this isn't, that this wasn't just created out of a vacuum, that for those people that are listening today, that they understand that this was in response to the merchants' concern. The other thing that I do also want you to understand is that we've done an entire survey of that area back behind Merchant's Way. So from, all the way from the parking lot in the fire station to, all the way down to the Narrows end, we've done a survey, we have accurate information to within a couple inches.
You're talking about meets and bounds surveys?
Meets and bounds, absolutely. So we know precisely what land belongs to the town, what land does not belong to the town, so we have that as, so these are elements, I guess I wanted to say, these are elements that we would all consider as we put plans together. So a survey, a parking study, you know, a stormwater management plan, all of these things become elements that you, that one considers as it puts a plan together for the area.
The plan, the plan talks about there being only fifty percent, you know, use on Merchant's Way and less than that on Main Street, which doesn't tell me there's a parking issue, depending on the time of year you did the parking. If you do the parking in July and August, that's the busiest time of the year for us. Now, I didn't get a chance to actually peruse it, but I don't know when you did the study. And being seasonal like we are, those kinds of things have to be taken into, into consideration, because we have a lot of roads like that around town that seem fine most of the time. But then you put that two, three months on them, and you can't get down it at all. So, I mean, I don't know, I haven't got a chance to read the entire plan, and I will once I get a minute. But those are some things we need to talk about. Sure. Anyone else? Judy?
If, if the world was perfect and you were able to create, what would you want to see there? I think that is the question that we need to answer. It's really nice to work with what you have, but just because somebody did it wrong a hundred years ago, doesn't mean that we have to continue to do it wrong. Okay? And again, I appreciate that this has been going back to two thousand and four, something in ten years in the making in terms of, you know, who's doing what and who's on first and all that other stuff. But you know what? We can commit things to death around this town. Action speaks louder than words. Let's move it off the dime and get something done.
You know, oftentimes, these kind of things don't actually get cleared up until some developer comes in and wants to do something. And then they come in with an out-of-the-box thinking.
Right.
And they say, we're going to do, now Buzzes Bay is going to be working pretty quickly, a big project, it's going to go up there. And it's going to be multi-use and the whole thing, and it covers from one end of the strip to the other, past the movie theater, all the way down to the other street. It's a big development kind of thing that's all planned to go in there at some point. And a developer came in, bought everything up, except one building he's got left. And he's got some out-of-the-box thinking to do that. And I think this is something that's going to require some of that out-of-the-box thinking in order to make that area really shine, because it could shine. You know, it really could. And it should, because it's, after all, it's our main street.
It will.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, just a little non sequitur. If you're on our color copies that we have here, probably the most amazing thing is what's happened to the old Piper Bowes, the difference from the way it looked versus now, that they've done a great job on that building. And I think that's helping, that, right there, that helps Main Street, Main Street a lot.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of those things do. And the thing is, is that we know that they need to draw more, obviously. If they're only using twenty-five percent of the parking out front and fifty percent in the rear, and I'm sure that's, the fifty percent is because most of the employees are parking out there, which ups the, ups the ante a little, I'm sure that that's, that they need to draw more. There needs to be more draw down there, and whether it's trying to woo somebody to cite in a store that might be a bigger drawing card, or the mix changes or something of that nature, I don't know what it is. But I think your, your expertise and your organization, that's where they need to shine. That's where you need to go to work and, you know, take the bull by the horns. I mean, every, you know, the bump outs, we can argue till doomsday, right? Whether you like them or you don't, and there's a whole bunch of things. But that's not, that's not really helping the street and helping what we need to do down there.
I will say to you that, to Derek's point, one of the reasons that El Mariachi came was because of the downtown, because the downtown had been renovated. They made that point and relayed that point to me, that that was a consideration in them coming to the downtown.
My sister-in-law's Eaton, the one in, by the way, Eaton on the one in Taunton, she says it's terrific.
It is terrific.
She says absolutely terrific. So that might be nice that that's there, probably be a good drawing card.
It's not going to help my waistline.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, we can't do that. All right, it's all set?
I have one more comment about this.
Yeah, sure.
I think a big benefit of this study at minimum is the amount of data we collected. I want to let you know that all of the parking data, the regulations that apply, the counts, all live in a database that can be mapped that Sal has, so I hope it will be useful to you in future planning.
Awesome, thank you.
I have one last question. Who owns this report?
We do.
Is it available to all of the people in Wareham?
It is on the website.
That's nice. In its entirety? Okay. Might you have a coffee hour in a couple of places and, you know, give hard copies out so that people who use the establishments downtown know what it says?
Sure, we'd be glad to do.
Not everybody is web savvy.
Yeah, absolutely. Be happy to work something out with you that you can share the information with.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, policy eighty-eighty-eight-ten.
I would move that we leave it on the table because we don't have our other members here.
Yeah, we don't, and it's going to be a bit, so.
You can always assign it to the two of them.
Huh? Yeah, you know, I don't want to assign it to them if they don't want to take it, because it just won't get done, you know?
I know.
So let's kind of go by it, all right? Discussion on possible ban and sale of Nips in the package store. Ms. Whiteside, this is your ballgame, you go to town.
Okay. I, yes.
We'll get to you, Rich.
There, the people who pick up trash regularly tell me that anywhere between fifty and ninety percent of the trash that they pick up is Nips or single-serve alcohol containers. You remember last year, they were, Mr. Bichette and Mrs. Bruce came in with three bags of Nips that they had taken from one quarter mile of road in the town of Wareham. So, you know, rather than saying, pick the stuff up, because you really can't make people do things, I figured, well, if they're not available, then they can't throw them away. Unfortunately, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does not allow us to limit the sale of Nips nor to add a bottle deposit on it. However, many cities and towns throughout the United States have in fact done just that. I will let Mr. Bowen speak to the issue, but I want to read into the record one of the sites that I found, and it's Sturbridge, Massachusetts. An old town and, you know, crossroads. Ban the Nip. I've always held that a no interference policy when it comes to folks making decisions that I would not have made myself. I feel bad, but their life, their decision, unless, of course, I was asked, then I give my very best advice, referrals if necessary, and support. The only other time I will speak up, whether I'm asked to or not, is when their bad decisions begin to affect me and others. Driving while impaired is one time I will speak up or act up, depending on the situation. I will take your keys if you are unable to drive. I will hold those keys until a police officer comes and then hand the entire package to them. I've done it before, I will always do it, even if you don't know, if I don't know jack about you. Your decision to drive could kill someone. You've already decided that your life is not worth it, but the other person did not have a voice. That's where we all come in. We are the other person's voice by proxy. So when I see a scenario that is becoming increasingly more dangerous and out of control, I will speak up, and I see one now becoming worse. All year long, I pick up empty nip bottles from in front of my house. Little empty bottles of vodka, Jack Daniels, Brandy, Seagram Seven, Captain Morgan, litter my front lawn year-round. New bottles sprout overnight as if planted the previous day. I pick them up when I see them. I've always thought it was a bit bizarre that they appeared on my lawn or on Main Street. Why? The reason is that the package store down the street has a fishbowl of Nips set up on the checkout counter as a point-of-sale feature. Much like the candy offered in the checkout line at Stop &amp; Shop, the Nips are offered for the convenience of those wanting to toss back a few before getting home for the day. That is the only purpose of a nip bottle. People don't buy Nips to stockpile them at home. People buy Nips to suck down and toss. They purchase one or more, go out in their car or not, and by the time they have headed north on Route one forty-eight, two-tenths of a mile, the bottle is empty and planted on my lawn. Littering, I expect. I don't like it, but I live on a state road, it's going to happen. Drinking and driving, I expect as well, but making it convenient to do so is something I don't want to see happen. I would like to see nip bottles banned in town. There, I've said it. Boy, that's going to kick a few people off. But the neat thing is, most won't say a word. It would look bad. They serve no purpose other than what I mentioned above. People don't go to the liquor store and stock up on tiny bottles of liquor unless, of course, they are the size of a Smurf and it's going to go last the whole month for them. If you want to be a grown-up and have a grown-up cocktail, then buy a fifth of your favorite spirit, bring it home and open it there. The nip bottle may have served a function at one time, in a different era with a different mindset. It's irrelevant today. One of our living room chairs is about fifteen feet from the road. I never want to meet you while I'm sitting in that chair. I'm offering this up to those of you at the helm of our town. I would like to see some conversation at the town hall level about ridding the town of this useless and potentially dangerous item. I know, I sound like some cranky old curmudgeon, one step away from yelling, you kids, get off my lawn! But think about it. The nip bottle serves what purpose? Placing a couple of dozen of them in a fishbowl at the register says what? Maybe it's me. Maybe I'm just tired of some people risking the safety and lives of others. There was an attempt by one town in Massachusetts to use Home Rule. It was defeated at town meeting because some people said, well, you know, my grandmother makes rum cake at Christmas, and that's when she buys the Nips. my grandmother makes rum cake at Christmas, and that's when she buys the Nips." So... I will also admit to having bought Nips at every liquor store I could find when my dad was alive. At age ninety, he had been prescribed a nip a day. So I would put my little hoodie on and go buy six-packs, because, you know, that only lasted a week. So I bought them, but that was, I bought dozens of them at a time. And I didn't have to pick them up off his floor, and I certainly didn't have them sprinkled on the streets. I know one of the most obvious places is Main Street. And I'm not picking on any person who's doing business in town, but it's pretty easy to buy a nip and chuck it over your shoulder after you suck it down. So...
I think there's only one person buying it.
Yeah, they're good at it.
So my recommendation is that, as selectmen, we come up with an innovative way of possibly asking for a nip ban from our local...
Well, we could Home Rule chatter it, you know? We could ask the legislature.
And we, yes.
Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna start by saying I was truly excited when I heard Mrs. Whiteside was giving me four roses, but then it just turned out to be a nip. All right, I'm here all night.
Four roses is a whiskey, just in case you don't know.
Million comedians out of work, right? But, in any event, yeah, I looked, I looked at it from the legal perspective, and I foresaw a couple problems with it, but I, I do have a solution. In terms of us adopting a policy as a board, or even getting a town meeting vote to ban it, I think we'd be preempted by state law from doing so. To ban Nips, right now, if you grant someone a package store license, under state law, they're authorized to sell Nips. If we took Nips out of the license, we're creating a new category of license that isn't available by statute. So, under preemption theory, we wouldn't be allowed to ban it. As to deposits, there's another part of preemption. When the state so fully regulates an area, it's called preempting the field, or occupying the field. And we've got the bottle bill. We have huge sets of regulations. I've read the regulations. They go to many, 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 many pages. And I think it's fair to say that the state has preempted the field of establishing deposits on any type of container, and that the Attorney General or the ABCC would strike down any efforts we made in that regard. Okay, so that's why we can't do it. Here's how we could do it. Get a special act. Simple as that. Now, what would happen to it when it got up to the legislature? You know, I, I have no doubt that our legislators would give it their very best effort. But I will tell you that the package and beverage industry has a very powerful lobby. But, that doesn't, that doesn't mean you don't try it. So what you would need would be a warrant article to see if the town will vote to petition the Great and General Court to enact legis, legislation, or special legislation as follows. We write it up. That's how you could do it. And if I'm on a, on a personal note, I might just say that, you know, after you, after Mrs. Whiteside raised this with me, I went to, in my own local convenience store where I do my regular shopping for adult beverages, and I noticed that the nip fishbowls, or goldfish bowls, whatever you wanna call them, not only were they everywhere, but they were right on the edge of the counter where, you know, any kid who walked in could just reach in. And the ones that were closest to the edge of the counter were colored, you know, almost these bright Kool-Aid colors, blue and green. And I would call them attractive colors for children. I don't see someone sitting in their car swigging down a blue or a green thing. That's something for a kid. And I spoke to the owner, and I said, "You know, you're gonna cause yourself a lot of trouble someday by causing somebody some trouble by letting them steal that or grab it. Do yourself a favor, move that off the counter where somebody can't get it." But that's my editorial comment.
The other thing that you suggested was that we could do, we could ask for a voluntary...
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Slaven.
I think it was the Marion Jim Bruce, a year ago, went out, I think it's, taught Claire Smith in West Wareham on Main Street, and they came back with three large trash bags of Nips.
You're beginning to remind me of Steve. You're repeating things that I just said.
Yeah, what I'm trying to get is, we were just, Sandy and I were driving on that section of road, about, not even a week ago, and it looks as if nobody ever cleaned it up, because they're there by the hundreds. There's a bridge there, and it's, I guess people hang out there, and they throw 'em out the window or just deposit them there. So it's, it doesn't go away. My, my suggestion would be that we go ahead, at least make an attempt to do a warrant article for fall town meetings as a special act. And if residents of the town wanna go ahead, they'll vote us, allow us to file it.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Now, what I'll do is, I maintain with the assistance of board members of running a list of things we might wanna see at future town meetings. I'll put that on the list, please.
All right. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, we're gonna move on, then. We're gonna go to, actually, you know what? Let's do the warrant articles next. We'll, we'll save, we'll save the vote on the assessors petition for the town administrator's report, if that's okay. So let's go to the warrant articles. Have you got the rest of those ready?
No, we have the, you'll be, tomorrow, you're gonna be emailed the transfers. There are transfers within the, within the yellow book. However, that was, I received an update from the, the town accountant. And the, the capital plan, the spring, is, is in there in the spring, but the annual has been, has been postponed. I sat down with Mr. Campina today to get a better idea of some of the items. So you should receive that list before the end of the week as well. So unfortunately, you'll have to vote 'em on, on Monday night. But my plan is to give you all the information so you can review it ahead of time.
Okay, no problem. Okay, we'll move on to that, banning Nips. Next would be, any other business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the posting of the meeting? Ms. Whiteside.
No.
No. Mr. Slaven, no, nothing for myself. How about you, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Nope. Okay, then we'll, we'll jump to the town administrator's report. And you, if you don't mind, you can do the assistant assessor's position in there.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this, this was an agenda item, so that we're not just bringing it forward.
There's nothing on sewer business, by the way.
Would you like me to just read the letter? I'll try.
Please.
Dear Honorable Wareham Board of Selectmen, that's you guys. I'm happy to announce that I have been forwarded the recommendation for the data collector slash assistant assessor position from the search committee. The search committee consisted of Matt Underhill, Roxanne Barboza, and Director of Assessment Jackie Nichols. Fifteen applications were received, and a total of seven candidates were interviewed. Of those seven, and after one withdrawal, the search committee reduced the number of candidates to two. The search committee then compared the two candidates, and in a unanimous vote, chose Mr. Steve Curry as the most qualified for the position. Some of his qualifications are as follows. Twenty-year member of the Wareham Board of Assessors. Thirty years as a real estate appraiser, currently licensed as a certif, as certified residential. Experience as a data collector involved in the last full measure and list in the town of Wareham in nineteen ninety-five through ninety-six. Earned his MAA designation and has taken many of the courses provided by the Department of Revenue. When Mr. Curry applied for the position, he was concerned about the conflict of interest law, Master on Law Chapter Twenty-Six A, as he has served as chairman of the Board of Assessors. I have attached information provided by Ms. Rooney, General Counsel, State Ethics Commission, as well as required paperwork. The key point is that the Wareham Board of Assessors appoints neither the Director of Assessing nor the data collector slash assistant assessor position. Mr. Curry will be required to fill out the attached forms as required by Section Twenty-D of the law, which he has done. The Wareham Board of Selectmen will be required to provide approval for Mr. Curry to hold both, both positions. I humbly request that the Board of Selectmen take the action of approving the hire of Mr. Curry, and by doing so, approve his holding both positions. If the Board of Selectmen choose to take this action and approval to hold both positions, I am positive that the town will gain a dedicated and talented employee in Mr. Curry.
Okay, Mr. Slaven.
I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to approve Mr. Curry holding both positions instead.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Slaven, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, three zero zero. Okay, next?
Thank you.
Do you want us to affirm the hire as well?
I would like, the, it's really the hiring which would make the approval of it.
I'll make a motion to affirm the hiring under the fourteen-day rule that we work under.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Slaven, seconded by Mrs. Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous, three zero zero.
Thank you very much. I know they're anxious to get going on everything they have to do, so.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Next up?
The next item I have is, as was spoken earlier, the, the ZBA lost an extremely talented member, Ms. Garziati. And one of the things people don't realize what she did was she literally wrote down all the decisions, everything that needed to be done. So that was presented to Ms. Barasso in the planning office. I'm sure the people that are on there now that have been appointed are talented persons. However, if there are any lapses, if things aren't filed correctly, we know that the thirty-day provision could, could make a entire development, let's say, or something that the town may not necessarily want, or that we may not necessarily get the restrictions or whatever sort of needs the ZBA requires, if that's not filed properly. We can't afford to send employees to all these meetings to write the minutes. I've listened to some of the recordings, and frankly, when, you know, the person making the motion, unless you know exactly who they are by voice, you can't hear it, you don't know who's seconding it. Some of the conditions don't necessarily make it over the tape recorder. And frankly, my gosh, we're using tape recorders. It's twenty fifteen. So my recommendation, I'd really like to see, is the boards and committees use, whether it's this room for filming, or get together with WCTV to film their, their meetings so they can present those to the employees, so that the work can be properly done, so that the minutes can be filed, so the order of conditions. I, I really think that we are, we are setting ourselves up for failure by this current process. And this is no shame on the, those boards and committees. It's just not a, a positive method of the way it's working.
One of the things we started here was naming the person who made the motion and the person who does it out loud. And maybe that's something we should pass on to the boards and make them do as well. Especially the boards we appoint, we certainly can send out that information. If the board so wants to do that, we can do that.
But I...
Which will help, at least you'll get a, you know, it'll be pretty clear.
But I think, you know, we have, sometimes there are two or three meetings on the same evening. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to encourage WCTV to outfit more than one room, because, you know, we, we are a business, and we're doing business constantly, and a lot of it is being done in the evening.
We have an excellent room that's set up right across from the selectmen's office, and people have probably been wondering why that's been held back. My goal is to have that set up so you can do a similar, similar fashion as this room, so we can have recordings, so when we have trainings or other, other meetings are being held. Because it's, you know, it, it often takes just, just one little gaffe to make a real, real disruption in the community.
So the other thing that you would be accomplishing would be providing town hall space for storage of records of boards and commissions?
That's, if you, it doesn't look the greatest in there right now, but that's why we brought those filing cabinets. We've been holding on to those. And a lot of the committee members have been begging us for space. And frankly, having original town documents in residents' homes, and volunteers, and dedicated volunteers, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, Alan, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, the, the only issue we're gonna have, the ZBA, depending on what they have before them, can have as many as thirty to fifty people show up. That room there really won't work for them.
This one?
No, the room, Room Twenty-Seven. This room here would work. So during good parts of the year, the Finance Committee meets no more than, you know, twice a month. And there's other times they meet four times a month, basically, or every week. So we should be able to work something out with them, because everything is here to go until we get something else running, which would help quite a bit. We can ask if WCTV would, like Mr. White, actually video-record, even though it doesn't get on TV, and provide a disc, which then, like the, Kelly could work off of and actually see what's going on as well as, you know, hearing it to have some idea what it is.
Yeah, they're gonna have to mic everybody and everything, too.
But that's, if they hear, if it's...
He is not a problem.
If it's, if it's somewhere else, there's no reason we can't have the mics here for them as well. We have a portable system. But I, I think it's something that we can't institute immediately, just because of the timeframes and everything else. Maybe the ZBA turns around, they meet, you know, on a different time schedule as well.
Well, we'll, we'll do a little homework.
When do they meet?
They meet on Wednesdays. I don't wanna say, tell a committee you need to change, but there's a possibility, if they were to pick Thursdays, and they could have, like, the second and fourth, or the first and third, then this room would be open.
They could have this room, because if they're the, they're one of the bodies that always has people in front of them, right?
I'm just saying, if they moved the Thursday from Wednesday.
Oh. Well, who's in here on Wednesday?
Okay.
They meet on Wednesdays right now. And the Conservation Commission meets on the first and third.
All right, I'll do a little homework on this and try to put it together, and I'll get it back to the board.
Finn calls me, too.
Okay?
All right.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The, I'm sure we already mentioned it, but again, pre-town meeting is being held tomorrow in this room at six-thirty PM. Copies of the Finance Committee reports are available on the town website and physically in Town Hall. If you go to the website, you'll see links for residents. You'll click that section, you'll click on Town Meeting Documents, and they are listed as the twenty-fifteen warrant, which, when you open it, will have a purple color. And the twenty-fifteen special warrant, which will have a yellow color. So spring, nice colors. They also help you differentiate.
Especially if you're colorblind. Except for Alan, who can't see either one of them.
So the, the last item is, I think we all received the emails. The House Ways and Committees, Ways and Means Committee set the, set their cherry sheet state aid that we received. The great news is the state aid increased forty-two thousand and eight dollars. The terrible news is the tuition assessments increased by forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. So that would be a reduction of seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Not so bad, though. Could be worse.
Could be much worse.
So let's not, you know...
But I've, I've learned to go to the assessments first and then look at the aid, so you don't, you...
Yeah.
False hope.
Could've been worse.
The, we're just preparing for town meeting. I plan to send you the rest of the documentation, so it'll be available to vote. And I appreciate everyone's hard work, and I look forward to an excellent town meeting.
Awesome. You all set? All right, next up is Liaison Reports. Ms. Whiteside, please. Actually, you know what? I keep going to you. Mr. Slaven, we need to switch this around.
Yep.
You're, you're, you're last. Second to last.
I'm best.
I'm last.
You're the best?
I'm the best.
Go for it.
We had an MPO meeting today. The project over by the Marion Wareham Line, the Bridge, is scheduled for twenty-fifteen. On schedule, not gonna be postponed, though. The project for Route Six and Twenty-Eight, which is on fiscal year of Massachusetts for twenty-seventeen, has increased in cost to seventeen point five million dollars as of today, which is another increase of over two and a half million dollars. The project may possibly go through fiscal year twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen. It might get split, it may not. I also was on the phone today with Mary at Senator Pacheco's office. The Sewer Commissioner Modification Act that we passed at town meeting is going to be voted on the floor on the twenty-eighth. It will immediately go over to the House and hopefully be scheduled for that same week to be voted on. It looks as if there should be no issues. And I'm hoping that on May first, when the new sewer commissioners come in, everything is in place and ready to go. That's it for me.
Ms. Whiteside.
Yes. The Veterans Council is in the process of making sure that all of the veterans' graves in town are, excuse me, marked with appropriate medallions and American flags. I wanna thank... I want to thank Matt Underhill for making big, big copies of the cemetery lots of each of the town-owned cemeteries so that they can be annotated with veterans' names, so it's big enough for us to see, and that project will be done before Memorial Day. And again, I want to thank the Veterans Council, as well as the Council on Aging, for really stepping it up, moving it on, and getting some stuff done.
Okay, next up will be approval of the executive session minutes. Can you turn your thing back on?
Oh, excuse me. Move the executive session meeting minutes of March thirty-first, 2015, be approved as written and held.
Second, second minute, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slavin. Is there any discussion about the minutes? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, three zero zero. And that? I guess I did already. You all set? Alan, you already signed it, okay. All right, so that's it. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Do we have any approval of bills or anything?
No.
Oh, good, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, Wareham. Have a great week.
Good night, Wareham.